First, this need was posted according to law and we do have a court present. Um, we will move straight into our next item of business, which is Audience with patrons.
Double double check.
Okay.
Real quick. I just checked it. Double.
Alright, perfect. Alright, first item of business is compensation. Alright. Do you have anything? I know that everything was presented in board book as well as Mr. Townsend gave sent an email to us. Um, so do you have questions? In short, do you have anything?
I don't have any. I was gonna just provide y'all a copy of what was in the board book just in case. Uh, first copy is the numbers that y'all were requesting. And then the second page is just every cap, uh, everything we discussed the other day. So if y'all have specifics, y'all just let me know.
So I'm just gonna thank you for doing this work.
Absolutely. I did wanna add, I know the last time y'all did ask specifics on was a, uh, oh, one and a two, sorry.
Oh, okay. How many of them?
Year one and year two, okay. Yes, we have eighteen employees in year one and five employees in year two. So I hope that was important here, uh, in reference to the rest of the numbers. Yes, ma'am, we have one app. For year one, we have eighteen employees and for year two, we have five employees. And then we pulled the food service out and federal funding is pulled out.
Thank you for giving that, I appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, need clarification? Is there any, uh, I never turned out the last week, you said, the recommendation?
Yeah, so, I mean, the recommendation, you know, based on the deficit would be, uh, one percent. Uh, of the board is considering possible, but I think it's a percent or more. I would be concerned about the optics of something like three percent, especially when we're actively working for a v. uh, and so, just give you that for your consideration.
Are there any other questions or comments, or is there a motion to be made? Again, once a motion is made, we can continue to convert, we can ask questions, clarification, anything of that nature. Uh, if there are any clarification questions, those can be asked right now, but to open up full-on discussion, uh, a motion.
I tried last week, I was like, um, I was working off, you know, that routine. And there was a lot of conversation about, um, who wanted to, you know, get a deal. I missed somewhere in there, and I think I got some clarification from Mr. Townsend before that. But I still would like to, to need to learn more why one percent, two percent. I kept getting the word deficit, if we do two, we push our deficit out. If we do three, our deficit go out. So my thing is, I live in a, a home. I'd say four, a home, one mistake, I live there. So four means we that you have a kitchen and you can pull it out. So if we are continuing to add to our deficit, if we decide whether to go two or three, what does that look like? When the conversation is between our teachers and the communities? It's, I know we gave, had a lot of conversation about, oh, I can't believe they have a deficit, what if we're done with the fund? That, that, that conversation was going out. Never been on a gossip station, so I don't know what they, I do. But where are we? If we say the two, then I know it's gonna raise the deficit. Uh, if you say three, it's gonna raise the deficit. Which one of those, and I'm comfortable with one. So I have to switch my whips and say, okay, what are you doing today, grades or whatever? That's if I develop a grade, the other, my other needs extended and I'm moving to the car. So that's where I feel about two and three. So I need some clarification on, uh, two and thirty. And what it, what this is gonna look like to our staff, that's what we have a message hoping they're gonna send to me.
Oh, okay, that would be my question.
It's ten one percent.
So if you look, any one, two, or three percent is gonna increase our deficit. So the back page, do remember what I pulled apart, this for mine.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the last weeks on the back, correct? And then this week's taking out those few that we took out, or the two groups that we took out is what's on the first page, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So you can see a full picture of what was discussed last week? And then what was, what we asked to remove and what that left us with for all staff?
Yes, ma'am, and that's what I'm trying to clarify is, the, uh, everything highlighted in red, uh, my eyes nice and red, means obviously we're continuing to increase the deficit. So anything on the first page? We took everything from the last piece where it said total cost for support staff plus administrative support, one percent, two percent, and three percent. Took those numbers and subtracted, that took the federal funds and the food service workers out of there. And then this is the new numbers based off of that information.
I don't think the whole numbers are on that page.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they are. This is last week's, this is first, and then we pulled those out because they're not, they don't, that's on part of it. And so this is what we're looking at. So if we go one percent to all staff, except who's getting the pass-through money? It's, that's what our, it's increasing our deficit by one hundred forty-three, nine fifty-six. If we do a two percent, that's what it will do, and a three percent will do that. Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
So these are last weeks, but we asked because some of those people could be pulled out to have those numbers pulled out because you can see there's a difference.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's ten thousand dollars just in your one percent. It's more than, I mean, it's almost twenty in your two percent, and it's sixty-one, no, fifty-nine, sixty-one, sixty, oh, I'm sorry, something like that, in your three percent. So it made a big difference pulling those out. And that was the intent, right? So we can see truly, if we gave a three percent raise or two percent raise, what is that true number gonna be? Because all of those last week lumped in weren't gonna be paid out of that. Is that, is that a correct?
Kind of, is everyone on the same page on that?
I picked up on that piece, but so what, the people that they pulled out were people that can be funded from another budget.
Okay, yes.
So the, uh, the ones that, uh, food service, uh, they can be funded out of, of Mr. Gray's, uh, account, uh, which is totally acceptable. He's gotta be a funding to handle that. So when we say pulling out, they're still gonna be whatever you guys decide, one, two, or three, because it's not, we have targets.
So now food service.
And that, and federal, yeah. And some people that are paid by federal, is that correct?
Okay.
So, very, sorry. Nope.
Does the motion need to just say one percent?
Yep. And then also, all, and it needs to say support staff plus administrative support, so it's very clear on who that goes to? Because we, we just want, I just wanna make sure that the motion's made.
Oh, a little more explanation on what, how we suspect favor.
So, I mean, really, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that if I'm a community member and you're coming to me and you're saying the school's in big trouble, and if we don't get your vote, it's not gonna look like it does right now. So if you pass a real big raise, what does that look like for your fiscal responsibility, knowing that you're already running a negative deficit and then a negative fund balance? That's what I'm saying, as far as your level. You may wanna balance that out when considering what we've got to do, because if we do not, if we're not successful with the major twenty-six, it'd be huge issue.
So, so you, you're pretty much saying we're going to, they are asking for a certain amount to, to cover whatever the deficit is?
Well, it's, if, the pennies will generate three point six million, uh, over. That will get us out of the negative, uh, but it'll still only give us a front balance of, you know, around two million. Um, so we're still gonna be in, in a bad position, um, and we have not increased the deficit. Still sitting at six plus million dollars, uh, and so we're adding to the deficit for, right, at this point.
Need to say it?
Yeah.
No, six point, six point two, sorry, I'm like six point, I can't remember. Thank you, sir. Yeah, we're in a, we're at six point, sitting at six point two. So this will add, depending on what we choose. If we choose a one percent, it'll add a hundred and forty-three, but also remember, it is not just this year. When we do, and it's not one full percent, I think we got ourselves in a pickle a couple of years ago because it's one percent at the midpoint. So if we need clarification on that, I'm sure we could get some real quick. Uh, but it's not a full one percent, so not every staff member is gonna get a one percent. Some may get a little less, some may get a little more because it's, it's based on that midpoint. So there was a lot of confusion the last time we gave a raise because we gave a, I don't recall, no. We gave a raise and we thought that that's what, but it's kind of fluctuates depending on the midpoint. So it's not a true one percent to every staff member, it's gonna flux a little down or a little up. Same with two percent, same with three percent. So I just wanna make sure everybody is crystal clear on that.
And that's your all estimates too. Yeah, you just wanna make sure that that's there, uh, it could go up, it could go down, uh, but you just wanna make sure that that was clear.
Does that form a note for that, or?
For which part?
To, to see if it goes up and goes down, other than the.
The midpoint, right. I'm hoping it will not go up, by no means, uh, just because we have received the, the Tazki model is based off of that midpoint, based off of a one percent, a two percent, and three percent. However, I don't look at the budget as frequently as Mr. Bins, so I always say it's an estimate just to make sure that there isn't any sort of hesitancy of, oh, why did it go to one, a hundred and fifty instead of one forty-three, that type of stuff.
Yeah, one of the things to consider, what may fluctuate is, will we receive what is estimated that we want to receive for these allotments? Uh, teacher retention allotment, and then the support staff retention allotment. Uh, you know, anytime the state says that you're gonna get, you know, you're projected to get this much, even when you look at the summary of finance, that changes throughout the year. You may be projected to get this month, and in fact, each, almost bi-weekly, uh, it updates. There's what you projected, there's your action, and that actual will fluctuate almost all the time. And so that's one of the problems with good funding is, you never really know exactly what you're gonna get. And that's what would cause the fluctuation, what it caused, because if we get less of a revenue from that piece, then it would be more of a hit to the deficit. Uh, I don't think it would be significant in any, any way that fluctuation, uh, so I don't think it's something that would be a huge consideration on that.
Now, Mr. Uh, Gray, do you, do you, that, their SSRA, uh, what are they funded for? I mean, you said they have a separate fund bank.
Right, so they have their own fund balance for food service and separate from ours, and so it would come from that. We can, we can apply this if we wanted, but we don't have to because they can sustain their own rates.
At least received from the state, and it won't affect anything that, say, uh, our teachers.
Correct, they're completely separate.
Right, two separate fund banks.
Yes.
Correct.
Clarifying questions, or is there a motion to be made?
There could be more discussion, of course.
Yeah, a motion, and a motion can be amended, sorry, it sounded like a seventy motion.
A motion can be amended once it is made. But yes, there could be more discussion, and we can, if people have more questions, please ask the questions. I would rather y'all be overly confident and understand exactly what the pros and cons are of every aspect of it than us go into one. I think the more educated that we become in this, uh, the better off we're gonna be in the long run. So please ask away. And that thing's a silly question, school finances is a beast, and it is very confusing, and the state wants to just continue to make it confusing for us.
If, if the raise is approved, if the percentage goes above the, the teachers that have been here, is there, like, there's a service, they've also possessed the state's same point.
So the midpoint is gonna be a little bit different for, for the teacher pass-through. So the pass-through is, they have a set number that they're receiving, they're receiving four thousand if it's a three and four-year employee, and then five and all the way up to however many years they've been with the district will receive eight thousand, so that's not gonna change. Now, years of service for, as support staff, so like if they're full, uh, auxiliary, support, uh, community professionals, that's gonna be based off of years of experience, and that's how the Tazki generates the, the midpoints, based off of market study, the market values, on where the teacher staff, and there's the, the other, their. And that's where the years of service can be taken.
Do you have a question for their? It's, yeah, like, so, and I might have misunderstood this whenever teachers have come talk to me. It sounds to me like, like they could get hired in with five years of experience and then, and then be here for ten years, and they're still on like the pay scale of like a five-year person, and then if somebody comes in with seven years who has half of the experiences in the total, they are at a higher level?
That's a great question, uh, Mr. Chris and I actually had this conversation last week with the employee, I don't know if you wanted to come on behalf of that, I think you were.
Yeah, so if, if the district doesn't give a raise that year, then the state is saying.
Right, so, so I, if we do this, if we do a raise right now, does that catch those people up that have been here to be on the right level, or?
Well, but this isn't for the teachers, though, and so we're talking about the teacher salary schedule, right?
Yes.
So they're hired, hired out. And so what you're approving doesn't have anything to do with that piece because the state is providing that. So that's not shifting at all. So unless you were to do a raise for the teacher schedule on top of what they're getting from the state, it would stay the same, and that would still be true.
So that's a, answer your question, and I think that was our seed. So I think the perception that a lot of our teachers and districts, uh, teachers have received was, say, back in twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm gonna do my best state plan without any visualization, because that's the best way for me to explain it is, we have the district approved the five percent midpoint back in twenty-two, twenty-three. And, uh, we started with year zero at eight thousand eight hundred, for year one, it went to fifty-one, and something, year two went to fifty-two and something, so on and so forth. We come to twenty-three, twenty-four, the district approved that raise. So on that, uh, that pay plan, what are the, uh, the hiring schedule? And for all teachers, what we had to do was freeze everybody, but we didn't come up. So then year zero, year one, we're at eight thousand eight hundred, and everybody can just continue to go, whatever they were at that year, just continue their, the teacher pay. Then on the twenty-four, twenty-five, when we froze it again, that's where the, the first thirty years of experience, why it was always at eight thousand eight hundred. So nobody ever was hired in any different than somebody else wanting year five. So if you were year five and you were making fifty-four thousand, and somebody at year five that was coming in was making fifty-four thousand, nobody was ever making more coming in versus what they were here at the district. Because they're always freezing it.
Freeze to twenty, twenty-two?
Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, year first.
First, okay, so it's been two years. So if they got hired in two years ago, they had five years of experience, now they have two more years of experience. If, if we do not give a raise, are they at seven years of experience right now, and then are they still five?
So, since it kind of gives an idea of where the freeze is. So like in the twenty, after the twenty-four, we had a freeze for twenty years. Then for twenty-four, twenty-five, we had a freeze this year. So then last week, when I presented, I'm sure that we had, because we've had four years of a freeze, because when y'all had a first D budget on the, uh, the seventeenth of June, which is the date, we're now at four years of a freeze, so eight thousand eight hundred, so every year it's just being popped there. So if somebody was hired in at year five, whoever is at a year five right now, who's gonna make it?
But what I'm wondering is, if somebody got hired in right now that year five, that's right. Okay, if somebody got hired in three years ago that are four, are they a seven now, or are they still a four?
Yeah, they're at a seven, they're still making the same amount, they need to.
Okay, so, uh, what I was understanding was teachers were telling me that they got hired at this, they worked here for a long time, they were down here, but then somebody came in here and then were making more because they were stuck at this level.
Uh, if I'm understanding your question correctly, and that's, uh, anytime that we have that, that's, that's Mr. Chris and I said, yeah, we're just pursuing. Just to make sure, you know, we always wanna make sure we haven't missed anything, that they're going to be following that path.
Cause the whole thing, you said, you're freezing, the whole thing shifts, yeah.
Right, yeah, so, and so you're still, you're still, that year's still making the same. They, they were just basically telling me though, that, and maybe they were, I don't know, it's very, yeah.
It is very confusing, it's a, a hard, a difficult game.
And it was like, hey, I got it, I hired in five years, but I have eight years now, and somebody else hired in at six years, and they're making more than me, and I've got really two more years, but they were here, so it made it sound like you gotta leave and come back to get your years of service changed or something, right?
That, that wouldn't be the case unless you went to another district and you get the hire, because their, their scale is, they didn't freeze, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So ours did that because we froze. So they're not, so even if you have a five-year teacher and we froze for two years, they, they're now a seven-year teacher, but they're still getting paid at five because we didn't give any type of increase for year six and year seven. So you have a teacher that comes in, it's a six-year teacher from another, from Austin ISD because their husband was transferred, or their wife was transferred, or whatever, and they come in at a six on that scale, but because we froze and we have current teachers that were with us when we started freezing, that's how they're making. Does that make sense?
That's how they're making.
That's how they're making, that's how they're getting paid six, and this teacher that's been now seven years,
Yeah.
is making it at five because we froze, and they may have been a district, at a district that didn't freeze. Does that make sense?
So.
But you're paying them based on what, this is the only stuff on the last. So if we froze somebody in a, if we froze somebody at a one, and they've now been with us for three years, they're still getting paid at a one because we didn't give a, we didn't give a one percent raise or a two percent raise, so we just said, okay, now you're a two-year teacher, but you're still getting paid on your four-year experience. In basically IFT because we froze the salary.
But, so from, okay, so if I have three years of experience, if I got hired here and I have three, three years total of experience, and somebody else hired in with two years of experience, we're making the same, because we froze our stuff. But if I have seven years of experience, that's not in the frozen part anymore, that was.
It's all more, it's all just, it all just shifted now.
It's still a higher number, right?
Right.
If I've, if I've been here seven years, am I getting paid the seven-year row on that, or am I still getting paid the two-year row?
You're already here, it's what it's. If you're at seven years of experience, you have to validate that, verified seven years of experience from another school, it's not eighty percent.
I, I'm talking from our district. Yeah.
So like, if, if we verify that they had seven years of experience, they saw that their service difference by this mission of what we have at this, and that's eight percent based off of our pay. So, another.
I always, you almost wanna think about it like a slide, it's, right? It's so, it's so, you know, like, yeah, things is derived, and so each year you're gonna slide it down, everybody moves down, everybody, everybody moves down, so it doesn't, I think.
So a lot, a lot of that's said, but for all ten years, if somebody else comes up from Austin and they're ten years, we're getting paid the same, that's right.
And I would say, uh, another point that we kind of, I just wanted to is, I know the, the state step was a big concern, and I know this, uh, President Westmore, which in that last week, uh, the other pieces, it was if we, if we didn't freeze this, there was still an increase in pay, and if we were in a deficit, how are we going to, to get out of that instance? Because it was still, we would still be moving, I'm sure we, we paid. So when we had to go to check, we, we had to save the tax of the scale since the district, uh, were the board constantly making sort of compensation increases.
So we have teachers, there's nothing for any other staff, other non-teacher, non-students, are you doing this?
Right, so the teacher retention allotment is the four thousand and eight thousand, and that's for, for three and above. And the zero, one, and two, we can use the support staff allotment towards that, and then all other staff except administrative. So we complete.
This is the weird.
Yeah, this is everybody.
This is everybody, and we did a N S P.
Right, because the administrators aren't, they're not included in any allotment that we got, it's a direct hit, no matter what. And even part of the support staff, like counselors and all the others, that, what we got, those, I think it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand that we got, that doesn't even cover our. So once all of the allotments are depleted, right, this is what it will cost the district to give a raise, one, two, three.
They got the shit, would they come in and tell they get a raise?
Right, until any administrator, counselor, you know, until you get a raise, you're starting where I'm here.
What fund did you say year one and two will come out of?
Uh, the support staff.
It says on, yeah.
The S S R A. It's the yellow line, you're looking at the second sheet, it's the third yellow line.
Okay.
That was, we just.
And we, we sort of made a change to that at last.
So the, the one.
Yes.
To the S S R A?
For the, uh.
Zero. For the zero, one, and two.
Uh, yes, yes.
Right, zero stayed the same, right? Zero stayed the same, and then, uh, year.
Yes, sir.
Year one, one, two, three.
Uh, just to see that, because we wrote that, or show, I meant to mention that the estimated cost for adjustments on the first page, that was taken into consideration, up again for the year one to two fifty, and then year two at five hundred. Yes, sir. And so we went up to fourteen thousand five hundred, whereas before it was at thirteen thousand nine hundred. I'm sorry, thirteen thousand six hundred.
Correct, this is just for support staff, everything.
This is everybody, set for the teachers, and zero, one, two.
But obviously, you still have to make the, uh, motion to either to one, uh, the approval of classroom zero, one, two, and librarian compensation, which is not increasing the deficit, or the approval of support staff and administrative support at one percent, which is increasing the deficit, or the approval of support staff and administrative support at a two percent, which is increasing the deficit, or approval of support staff and the administrative support at thirty percent.
So you need two separate motions, one for the zero, one, two, librarian, and one for support staff and administrative.
Yes.
No, I'm very, I'm just feeling, you know.
Yes.
When you're, what you're, that, if that's somebody else. People's, uh, talk about sets, are they wanting to be in this place? You know, you're like, we down here, I'm just still here, but you have a long-term set. Either those that's coming in to support, they are working throughout, so, right? They, they, I mean, child teaching, they're going to.
Yes. If they're long-term, so they.
They're long-term set. So those long-term sets, yeah.
They're not included.
They are not included, so where are those, those? Definitely.
We're not doing an increase on, on subject. That's not, that's not part of any of this.
Not.
And I, I think the so pay is not.
It's, uh, what's that function, Mr. Bins, we're just, uh, our substitute function.
Well, it's not based on functions, it's based on object.
I do have it somewhere.
Uh, it would be sixty-one, twelve.
So, that's where it should be, it's that, uh, it, that, it's a great question, because that was, uh, obviously, we have some of our long-term sets that you sit, but the way that the, uh, approval of a classroom based on. Obviously, we have some of our long-term stuff that you said, but the way that the, uh, approval of a classroom based off of the hospital too, is based off of a, uh. Code that we submit in the ball and that's the zero eight seven. And a long-term staff cannot be classified as a deficit, so we're only showing the fact that classifieds support. So that's where they're not doing, at additional lines for them.
There, do you have any questions? For clarification of this?
What does the purpose need to be for the motion for the one, zero, one, two librarian?
Approval of classroom zero, one, two and librarian's compensation.
Although I make a motion, send it up. For zero, one, two and librarian.
For compensation.
Right, is there a second? Mark, we have a second from trustee Robinson. Any other questions? So there, zero is getting, saying where it is, one is going to two fifty. And two is going at five five hundred. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six, we wrote. All right. Did we get?
Oh, so.
Trust your arms.
Oh, for some.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, all right, so moving on to support staff and administrative support compensation. Is there a motion to be made or are there any other clarifying questions? That needs to be asked?
Administrators are just assistant principals. Directors. Everybody that takes assistant principal.
But please remind yourself that Mr. Townsend is on a separate timeframe, so it does not include that he is a January, February. My mind's not totally fine, please repeat. He's on this, uh, that's what we do as evaluation as well as his, any compensation for him. So he will not, that conversation will not come back to the table until January, February. So I just wanted to make sure. All right, any other questions? I'll make a motion. Uh, I make a motion for support staff and administrative support compensation to come in at two percent this year.
That's it.
Any questions? No. That's it. What was that?
I wanted to ask.
No, you can ask.
Said, uh, administrators and support.
Support staff and administrative support is how it's listed. Right here. Uh, support staff, so that's every AP and above. For the administrative and then all other support staff that's not falling into that zero, one, two librarian or. The pass through for the state, so that they're, the three or above.
And that's it, and these wrongy.
The federal, um, and food service were pulled out of that.
So if we go. Question to increase to a two percent. And please don't get me wrong, I'm always a kitchen behind. To me, it's not gonna send me straight to the hospital. I might go ER if we go with two, because we still in deficit.
Right.
And, and we keep adding to that, this, the deficit. It's almost like we can't see more. I mean, I, I don't know what's coming through that door. So, and I know every one of our teachers are well qualified and deserve. But as much as we can get. But at the same time. Our, our thing as a board is to be oversight. And I. I just, I got, I need to do. I, I just, I do one percent in the hopes that something else will come along. And then we can do it, do later. But two percent off the top. I'm, I'm just not, the deficit thing falls, I think it's, it's a deficit. A deficit is a deficit, you can't fix it up, you can't address it. It is what it is. So if we are continuing to have the conversation about we're deficit and we can't do this, we can't, either we can or we can't. Then I want the deficit removed and show you that it's been. But to keep adding to it, it's been us in a bad situation as a school district. I am totally in the middle with one percent. I want to say to them, I appreciate you picking up everyone. I appreciate you wanting to take and honor the flak that you take from our kids. Thank God, I'm there. It, it's sweet to see. But all that y'all do is that we cannot do it without you. And I want you to understand. We have to be mindful when we is there increase in output. And. I just, I, I don't see us running it two in a, in, in, without a presence. Cause we have removed it, I mean, our deficit is not going down. It's getting larger.
So I think that goes back to the conversation and I completely, I hear what you're saying, but I think this goes back to the conversation during budget. Season of when we were talking, leading up to the budget of where else can we cut? And I think that there are things that can be cut. So now it's a decision of, are we gonna go back and find toothcomb budget to find the money? To cut it, are we gonna continue and move forward? But I think if we don't, my personal opinion of one is if we don't. Do something for our, our support staff and our administrative support, what is that telling them? I, I, I understand that our budget is continually, our deficit is continually growing and it's not going smaller. But at what point do we say, okay, guys, we're at a breaking point of, we've cut our teach, we've increased our class sizes, we've cut our paras, we've. All the things that we discussed over the years, the next thing to cut is programs. So we as a board can say, okay, what programs are we gonna cut? To get to that point to where we're sliding down on our deficit. But I don't think, and I understand two per, two percent, one percent, three percent. And yes, it's adding to our deficit. But I think if we don't have people in those positions. Then. Where?
And like I said, I understand.
And so I'm.
We have empty seats in the school, all, all over the district. And I know that we cannot do it without, um, staff, I know we can't.
Yeah.
We can't do it, it doesn't matter how many kids in our seat, and if we don't have, um, staff in place. Then, then what? So I want the staff to understand, especially from my point of view, I see you, I hear you. And, and these meetings I will be at, at a meeting and I'll be saying to you, you know, I deserve a three. You just don't know what I do with a little job every day. You don't understand, yes, I do understand. But I need y'all to understand. We cannot. Continue to add to our deficit. We have to be, we're gonna be held accountable at the end of the day. So. I want you to know that we appreciate you. Uh, one percent, I know probably eat up with teachers, I get it, I get all that, been there, done that, I know that. But I don't think we can fit this far into deficit, that we couldn't stretch it and give you more. Am I right along with this? We have never been in a deficit like we are now. So in my opinion, and I'm just one, I'm seven. So I just have to say what I have to say. And I hope you take it the right way. And I don't want people out there and say, Priscilla Robinson is there in Thomas School forty-eight years and I can't believe that she said. It's not because I don't want to change. I just know, we are pushing it, we are pushing it, we are pushing it. And even with the biggest of the thing, I, I don't think I'm ready for things in this. Uh, so that, that's my take. I, I save one percent and I pray for it, that something happens and we can come later and say, we gave you one percent and look. We can do this. So like I said, that's just my opinion. So.
Just saying one percent with the understanding from the, uh, support staff and ministry, you know, this group. This is all we have, this is what's available right here.
And we can say, I think we should.
Being comfortable saying that.
I mean, I'm on the boat, we're on board two or three, just because there are cuts we could make. I mean, there, we have discussed other things before and I don't feel like we're doing new diligence to our staff. If we don't look at deeper cuts in some areas, I'm not saying staff, but programs, different things, but I don't, I don't feel like. I feel like they should be paid their dues, just like a teacher in a classroom, it's all of them to make their life. And I will say. It's not a beautiful scenario on either side of the coin, a one percent, a two percent, a three percent versus what the state is passing through. And it's unfortunate that we've been put in this position for this time. And it's unfortunate that our deficit is what it is because of years of kicking the can down the road. And the can is so heavy at this point that it can't be kicked any further. Like there's no picking it up and throwing it and that's what's been happening for year upon year upon year, way before anyone that's sitting at this table. Was in this room. Maybe even people sitting in the audience, I don't know. But it is, this is a problem that has been years in the making. To get to that deficit that we are, I'm not saying that it's okay, I'm not saying any of that, it's not okay. And I think we do have to do a deeper dive. And there are things that probably need to be cut and it's not just gonna be across the board and everybody gets cut the same. Because we are at a point where we have to decide, what are we in the business to do? And I understand that's chasing the tail because a lot of our programs feed our students and they come to school because of the programs. But at one, some point, we have to have the honest and hard conversation of, what are we in the business to do? We need to educate these kids so we can launch them when they graduate from Bay City High School. To be successful citizens. And yes, I'm not saying get rid of every program, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying cut every program to be zero. But I think there needs to be a look at that. Because really, that's where, that's all we have left to look at, unless I'm mistaken, please correct. Anything that I'm saying, but in my, that's my one, again. Position is, we have to start looking and doing deeper dives into more things. Than what we have to try to lessen our deficit. But if we're gonna take that, in my opinion, if we're gonna take that out on our support staff and administrative support staff. Then are they going to stay with us? I don't know. I don't know, and that's where I go back to the two percent is, yeah, it's two hundred and thirty-four. At five seventy. But I, I don't know, a one percent is not even gonna cover their increase in insurance. So if we do it to a two percent. That may cover their increase, I don't, I don't know, cause I don't, I don't see the numbers every day. But I. I, it's a rock and a hard place and we all sit in these seats in a rock and a hard place and we do it because we care. And so I hope that that is also what people hear is that we don't sit up here because we wanna wear the hat. We sit up here because we truly care and these conversations are hard, but we are here because the can has been kicked for so long. That we cannot kick the can any further.
Well, I will say that it goes along with what we do at plan, uh, because we are gonna do an efficiency audit in this fall. Uh, and so we will identify the areas that have the least effect. Because paying for our book, the least effect on the student outcomes as possible can. So that's part of the plan.
Comments, questions? Question?
It's not something that you do regularly. We, we have done, yeah, in the district.
A whole efficiency audit. We've done apartments, right, and we've done building type stuff in the past?
Not that I'm worried, none of my time here.
Okay.
Um, so an efficiency audit is done, uh, when you're needing to pass a V A T R. That's one of the requirements, so you have to select an efficiency auditor by July fifth, prior to the November election. So that's one of the requirements. That's waived right now because of barrel, but since we're going with the disaster pennies, it'll be a requirement in the, in the following year. Um, the objective, if I'm not wrong, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Townsend, but. The objective is do an efficiency audit this year to see where you can get efficient throughout the year, so that when you do one. And that one won't be, that won't meet the set, uh, the requirement for the November twenty twenty-six election. But at least it lets you know where you can improve throughout the year and where you can make those cuts. Um, and we don't know what, what's gonna come back on that. Um, to be quite honest, speaking to, you know, peers and stuff, programs is, is mentioned. Um, the other big piece, and as I've shown, you know, in the two years that I, that I've had the opportunity to present the budget, the bulk of the budget is made up in salaries. So the efficiency audit will illuminate salaries in areas where there may need to be cuts. That's just me being transparent, um, because that is where the bulk of your budget's gonna be. Um, and that's where it is, speaking to people in the region center, that's what they tell me. So, uh, that's not a recommendation, that's just information that's being passed along. Um, but an efficiency audit will kind of let you help you identify those areas. And like Mr. Townsend's saying, it's going to help you identify areas that you're able to make those cuts, become more efficient as a district in, in the way that. Um, minimizes the impact to the, to the education of our students. So ultimately, um, that's the goal for doing one in twenty-five, twenty-six. You'll have to select an efficiency auditor to run an, an efficiency audit in July and August of, uh, summer twenty twenty-six. To meet the requirement two for V A T R in November twenty twenty-six. But at that point, uh, once you have the audit, you'll have to publish the findings to the public, uh, before the election. So the, the hopes of doing one this year is that you find where you can become efficient, make those cuts. And with the time that the, you know, that you buy with the disaster pennies. Uh, show where you, you know, you did your due diligence and try to really see where the deep dock could be done. Um, because that's what those folks specialize in. Um, but ultimately, yeah, that, that's the goal, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, the other piece of that is too, is we sit there, if we don't do the efficiency audit this year, then there was a whole, whole opportunity of a year of possible savings. Uh, which could be the debt, debt or, or deficit and our fund out, so. Uh, you know, that's why our recommendation is that we do that as soon as we're beginning it fall, so we can identify those areas and try to offset the deficit there this year. Uh, instead of waiting until the following year. And it gives us an opportunity to have conversations going into, uh, the summer, to be able to make adjustments, uh, needed for the following year instead of being a year behind. So, uh, that's, that's. It's the best option for us right now, uh, to do that, instead of sitting here and just guessing on where we need to cut. Uh, let's, let's be restrictive about it and make sure we're all right there.
Questions, comments? All right, so there is a motion on the table for support staff and administrative support. For a two percent compensation raise. Is there anything? Great, all in favor? Great. All in favor? Opposed? So the motion passes five to one. For two percent to support staff and administrative support. Right. Thank y'all for the work on that. What you're doing, I truly, truly hope you know that we all truly deeply care about each of you. And there's not a good situation. So I hope that that comes across that every single person sitting at this table truly cares about y'all. And wants you in this district because you're a valuable asset to this district. All right. Moving to our consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be taken off the consent agenda? Is there a motion to be made? All right, we're a second to the motion. All right. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right. We do not have any personnel this evening, so we will move straight to adjournment. Is there a motion to be made? All right, we have a first and Mr. Priscilla and Mark. First and second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? I opposed. Motion passes six to the rule adjournment, meaning it's five fifty-two, sorry.